Just want to make the announcement that the reason why we're waiting is for Denise Duffy to arrive. One that's going to be preventing to us and apparently she just passed the airport, so she can be there shortly. And once she's here, we'll be there. This reading to attention. For the order, the special meeting is the WYO City Council and Planning Commission. Can I roll call?
Councilmember Oli.
Present.
Councilmember Alec.
Here.
Councilmember Rex D. Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Getzels.
Here.
Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Burger.
Here.
Commissioner Greger.
Present.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Here.
Chair Hayward. Thank you.
Please join me in the pleasure of reading. Pleasure of reading. We'll have the housing element update and update of the housing element process and timeline, which will be presented by Denise Duffy from the E and N.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and commissioner of the commission, and it's a shame being here tonight and. Have a presentation today to really update you on the housing elements fifth cycle or the same cycle. And our hope for today and our objective is to go over. The recap what our requirements are and since we have a new. Just a little bit about Rena. And progress that approached from the. The progress that have been made and their approach are using for the update are updated cycle program revisions. It's happening with public and H B review and our timing and then stash steps. Hope to get some comments, any, and then wrap up on the. The city council meeting. Further action. They have seen requirements. So most of you have seen, you know, understand now the requirements recognizing that. Where each year effect to do their fair share of what's called regional housing. The assessment and the city's not required to build a housing, but to accommodate a area of poor capacity to build. Have the property that's properly zoned to be able to build. Accommodate a regional need assessment of a region. It's a required element to have an element at the general plan. So when you adopt this housing element, that will take you actually do it with your own plan update. When update, you establish the roadmap for accommodating the projected housing units and then you set the new goal. There is a specific set of requirements for housing elements. You have had an adopted housing element on December 2019. So you basically identified the housing needs. An update is required every eight years because we are in a four year cycle of bold adoption. Compliance certification of this house now and it's going to be good in the eight year cycle. It's really important to me. And community involvement is also a critical part and. Updating the search to housing laws is actually more. But it's also important because you want to have continued eligibility and eligibility for. A B two point O and another kind of potential funding of B two. So there's various categories for affordable housing, extremely low, very low, low income and moderate. And you're considered affordable if you can over thirty percent of your income on housing costs, of course, inflation that, you know. Delved into in this area as well as all the areas, but that's the categories defined by the state. And we have our own regional housing needs assessment. This is from the fifth cycle. You can see the difference in terms of. Fifth and sixth cycle, we're going to talk about that a little bit later, but Monterey County totals for the fifth cycle was seven thousand three hundred eighty six. And for the Monterey region, just twelve thousand six twenty four, and we're now facing six cycles. So just a little bit of the Rena process. It's been discussed and freshed before for previous workshops. The Rena process of a number of units is really applying from the state down to the. Our R M A associated. Monterey Bay area governments. And then they develop their regional housing assessment needs and then it goes down to the, to our local government. And what's different recently is that our local government is now recording as we have in the last decade. Annual one part reports for both housing. He's been very good about continuing to do that. So our allocation, we have what's called a shortfall for the fifth cycle as well as a requirement of the fifth cycle. So the shortfall is for low and very low income and since the city did not up until 2019, they did not update their housing element. The nineteen ninety two version, an accomplishment to have done and adopted one in 2019. And we're still working to get H compliance, but the programs and the policies were adopted. So because of the Rena housing, regional housing needs assessment. That's a number of new housing units that need to be built on a regional basis, sign of each jurisdiction. We have the fifth cycle and then a fourth cycle. If you didn't do a fourth cycle, we pick up on the shortfall. And anything that's low or very low income gets pushed into the next cycle, but you're still, it will still be in the Rena. Your, your need assessment. So for the fourth cycle, we have fifty nine low and very low. And then for the fifth cycle, eleven low and very low. So that adds up to. Seventy units and then they also include the rest of the twenty seven units of the fifth cycle. We have a total combined set of units in the Rena rate service. And we, I know we've talked about this before, I think this is your fourth workshop, but those sites in Victoria is also really important. And we completed that. That a couple of times in front of the planning commissioner as well as the city council to talk about what sites are available. That's something that we want to accomplish in finance today too. It's evaluating suitability of potential sites that have the capacity to be used to accommodate them. So just a little bit about the progress that's been made and what's been happening. Again, the site inventory was completed in 2019. H C B reviewed that, prepared papers of review letter in 2020. They thought the sites that they identified at that time were appropriate. Other letter was more toward what you need to do in terms of rebuilding on two other items. We've held workshops for A D U ordinance and the housing element. We completed an A D U ordinance, which is one of the programs on the housing element. The city also had an economic study that talked about city owned land. That was completed and that sort of provided a focus and direction from the city council about where growth could occur and could occur in terms of residential units and affordable units. They got questions from H C B regarding fifth and sixth cycle. One of our last meetings was a question related to, can we combine fifth and sixth cycle? And they said no. And but that was really helpful to address that with them and we also, as reflected at the city council, do as much as we can. For a big cycle while you're preparing this cycle. And we'll just get data. And then the, that was over the last year, 2022. Also, the AMBAC six cycle numbers came out, the Rena for six cycle came out in October twenty twenty. It was finalized. And so that gave us the actual number that we need to address in our next fifth cycle and also gives us some information that we need to. The E I R analysis on a cumulative basis. That was really important. And December, the planning commission adopted the emergency shelter ordinance. And that was also one of the programs in the, the elements. And now here we are with our workshop in 2023 in March, reviewing a revised program for A one. Program regarding. Site one for fifth cycle and making the determination of both site one or site. And site one A or just site one. We're doing outreach, we've completed the outreach. Actually. For the H C B requirements. And also tonight, the council reviewing and we're. Which reading and hopefully will be offered by, by end of March, so we can move back to. Those of that. So I just quickly wanted to put up that we have a number of sites. That we're considering for effective inventory and recap here, one through four, including various sites in the A D U's. When we did look through there, you know, the obvious issue with the city is that there's very limited area for. Development of housing because it's not super tight, but also. The background resources and. Zone area, the areas that are not, there's not that many available that are areas that, excuse me, that are available to accommodate residential that are actually zoned. Particularly in the area that will be large blue and in the former four or five. Next slide. So essentially tonight, what we want to do is just recap the inventory and completion of it. Final direction on site one, site one A or both. We want to show you the final draft of the revised program language for rezoning for site one, that for program one A. And we want to discuss the approach to rezoning for site one and. Whether we do the entire site or that's an overland zone. Recognition on that and then the first reading and then. Also our end for tonight and. So again, the, you know, many of the sites, I wanted to brief the goal over that we. Although we wanted to put in A D U's for a fifth cycle and we have now have. The history of reading A D U's to reorder last few years. H C B is really wanting us just to continue moving this like or just the shortfall that we have. And then I think what we're going to use is we'll be able to retain that record and identify that we can provide something new to meet our shortfall and to meet our Rena and the cycle, which is good. Next slide. So again. Our H C B comment letter identified that they. They agreed with the sites identified as sites one and one A. They said focus on new sites. We've had previous discussion with the council and worked up about whether or not site one would be the only site to be looked at or whether we include site one and one A. Went back and looked at the notes, looked at the video, I think it was site one, site one and one A both, but I wanted. Because I also heard that it was just site one. So either one, I did talk to H C B, H C B said that. If site one could accommodate all of the required Rena. Then that would be adequate, although their H C B comment letter talks about site one and one. So this is just a table from our, from our housing element that identifies the fifth cycle, more cycle and how. And that the city have not had any new construction or rehabilitation units, so we can't apply any of those for the last. Cycle of the second. The important thing, I know that we've heard before, but rezoning is required to accommodate. The regional housing needs and also required to have a compliant. A H C B housing element. So the other required components is an updated needs assessment. There weren't that many changes that we had to make, but because we did fifth and sixth together, we tried to really accomplish the fifth cycle update. Programs and policies to review. We have completed a performance evaluation of policies and programs from the current. Fifth cycle housing element that can also end all the use for six cycle. Which is great. We have a housing constraints assessment requirement, assessment of, it's constrained housing, housing from governmental, non-governmental issues. One of those could be the cost of housing, cost of building, et cetera, funding. Those have been completed and updated and we've updated, of course, today's market rates, et cetera. And then we have completed. In our draft in 2019, it updated it as we've discussed for the, the update that was needed to H C B shortly. And so the last thing that we need to do is just complete our public outreach. And it's got confirmation. For final items or. I just put in some of these updated information that we got from the. Information. The city's really focusing and regulating especially have an aging population. Our population growth has been very stagnant over, over the last couple of decades. The overall population has decreased and the city grows at much, much greater than the. And the household size has decreased in both renters and other. So we are now at a spot where, since we've done the other work for both fifth and part of six. We're now just looking at updates for policies and programs. And the approach that we're using, here's the different policies for our housing element that are in chapter seven of our, which you have to know. It's, the approach we're using is we're not trying to make, we have the deal, we're doing specifically what H C B wants. We can move it forward and then get into the sixth cycle. I wanted to make that clear. And then so there's rezoning, two, two elements are required in the H C B letter, twenty twenty, actually, that says. Complete the requirement to amend zoning ordinance. So basically we have to. Amendment zoning ordinance for the. Emergency shelters. And then we also did have a program, we did an amendment, a D U, so we can do that program. So the city council considered emergency shelter. Tonight, which is great because we do have a requirement to, once you have. City capital adopted emergency shelter format to go to H C B for review. So then that's. And then we need to do the rezoning for residential. So a lot of residential on site one, and I actually just got site one right there, which is site, site one, there's site one A or both. For affordable housing and enough land to accommodate the Rena. Consider them to have now an adoption. We don't necessarily have to have the exact language for the zoning code amendment or the location or the map. That could be programs what we need to submit to H C B and then work on the basic overlay zoning ordinance. Language itself, ordinance and the benefit of the location and it's just a result. Next slide. I think it's kind of repeating, you know, it's not. So here is actually the updated language. From the zoning code. So within the language in there and can't read it that long. Oh, excellent. Yeah. So actually, we have a copy of the chapter seven, which is all the amendments. And I did want to just mention that the two major amendments are related to. Emergency shelter and rezoning. The other minor amendments to the common plan chapter seven, which we did. Is basically taking out. When I think of and in a company and adding some dates, updating the. So policy A one. Revised policy and. The city has identified site one, and I can confirm or the one, the site one, site one A as well as a preferred site for the development communities. To add in and assuming the city bring up. Has identified. Our site inventory analysis, the, for the very low ability categories for development of sixteen units for Monterey, the bottom line. So if the city decides that they want a new site one and one A, okay, I think that's what H C, H C B would prefer, we'll just add. And then the zoning ordinance would be revised to allow oral reservation development on sites for low and low income. The site will review zoning performance of government code sections per the H C B letter. And is just identified by. So this is the language that we've suggested. This is not by any chance the only time you'll have to review this. We'll have it back at the housing element. It'll be between ten and thirty days per review. Report comes up to H C B and then while it's being reviewed by H C B for sixty day review, the public can also provide comments on it. So this is our, so we start to be able to provide that up to H C B. And have a responsible timeline of completing the rezoning by the third quarter on point three. If H C wants a three timeline for each of these. I can stop there if you have any questions or go to the next one. We also revise that A D U ordinance. Objective to secure everything and the user will delete it sometimes and it will be adopted. And identify, you know, that will continue to support A D U's. Excellent. Yeah, that, that's the language for the A D U's, which you have. And next slide. Yeah. So I also wanted to put in some dates and milestones for the fifth cycle and then talk a little bit about the fifth cycle presentation. So. We are hoping to get your support tonight to. For the. Determination of the sites. For approval for the first reading. And then we will submit. That would be in Mexico may have the updated M and draft of the element to this city manager for any review. And then be able to publish the, on the website, the draft of the element update as a draft. And we can then provide it. We don't necessarily need a formal meeting to provide it to H C B at this point. It'll be a second draft. And then they'll have a sixty day review period. They reviewed a draft before they did not need the full ninety days that they would. For this fifth cycle. Providing comments back within this, after the sixty days will allow us to be able to do any revisions if they think that they're suggesting and bring notice before the planning. When the council did see what the revisions are, confirm review and, and then do the final adoption. The final commission recommended to the city council. And then submit the final housing element. Or September, a little bit of time to do the overview and certain compliance. So. Then that process too, during their thirty days or ninety days. So they're doing their use, they go off of, be able to have the E I R. And then I, I thought it'd be interesting to also talk about the sixth cycle. Pass along the information and talk about that a little bit today. Our sixth cycle Rena numbers are a hundred and eighty four units, of which fifty three percent are low and very low. And low and sixty units were very low, fifty two percent for low and very low income, which is thirty eight units low and sixty are very low. Does that include the free use numbers or? That does not. So it would be for next, it's additive if each time. So the, the, so that we already have is additive on its additive, that's correct. And if you don't. Two hundred seventy one. Thank you. And that is the community analysis that we're doing in the E I R. So for the sixth cycle update, community profile is one of the requirements. Housing needs and use requirements, one of the requirements. But the housing sites availability, outing these trends, review of the last housing element. So a number of those six cycles have been accomplished while with a more developed cycles. A layup for the second, what needs to be done, it's a very major component is. A permanently furthering fair housing, A F M H requirement houses. Revising any goals, objectives or plans that the city may want to do through the sixth cycle. And then G and engagement that starts, crosses over again to workshops and do some outreach as well. So the, I think we're, we're talking about, I think it's going to be road rate fair housing. A B six, A B six, A B seventy two requires town elements to demonstrate the local jurisdiction. It's very fair housing jurisdictions to demonstrate compliance with state by analyzing any particular housing and segregation issues. Identifying fair housing goals. We have some in there of our fifteen element that would be for developing strategies to implement goals and ensuring that I can ensure. Are identified in such a way that it promotes A F M H. There's also reinforcement action by H C B. And this needs to be, the whole approach needs to be meaningful. Overcoming patterns of segregation is an important element of the housing element and we want to be able to look at this as a county wide base, but also look at it. And then another important. Senate bill is A B two fifteen in relation to public review of documents, A B two fifteen. It's, it really furthers the public participation requirements. Prior to this, the middle of the first draft of a plan for H C B, the local government let make the draft of the sixth cycle. Element available thirty days on the city's website. The comments are received and that's taken lead intended to be to consider an incorporated comment. And that's done before you submit draft. What's interesting about this cycle, you don't necessarily have to go before the public commission to submit draft H C B. You can put the document out for. And then you get it to H C B, then it's possible that you could, we'll be right to that ninety year review. That's the next. But not the next slide, but it's also something that was reviled to A B two fifteen is that the. Sixth cycle requires a ninety day review of the first draft by H C B. And then it also requires to, what we've been doing is doing a pretty thorough track changes version. So that the public and H C B will be aware of things have changed in each of the documents. You'll see that. Slides that show the. That's going to save them some. And. And then maybe should be not also the saving to make sure we have noticed to all those people that are. Yeah. So I just wanted to highlight some of the statutory deadlines and the requirements for a housing element. There is a deadline of December fifteenth by twenty. I mentioned no city council commission approval requirements prior to the initial draft between H C B and I think that's very helpful. That requirement for the ninety day reviews, the A B twenty fifteen for that first draft. Also, A B two fifteen requires thirty day public comment period. So it will have a thirty day public comment period before anything goes out. Before the sixth draft, before the H C D. The provisions are provided in ninety days, February ninety days from H C B for that draft. And then a second sixty day review is necessary, which likely will be all the other ones that have been going through jurisdictions. And that would also have to, you have to also have a time that accommodates that. So essentially just reviewing public H C B, that, that takes about a number of months. That you're either going to be public review or. Or H C B review. So we have to take advantage of them. That you're either going to be public review or, or, um, HCD review, so we have to take advantage of them. Moving forward and the work that we've already done. Next slide. So, yeah, we have some draft timelines put there up here, we also have our working, uh, the, and we're going to need to put together a draft. Contract amendment or having an update for the sixth cycle. Um, but we have a short and quick timeframe to work really hard to get the, um, A and M H done. Um, we look at the options to do that as well as the outreach. Um, I'm going to be submitting to John early next week, uh, our same outfit element programs and, um, I'm going to post them on the website. So that, um, each of the commission and client and the council can look to see which of those. I will have a recommendation in there that's there, which of those should be retained, which of them should be amended and. Um, which of those we can read in, in that state of the first. A question that we're going to be asking for, for, for about for the house element, um, for the sixth cycle. Right back a little bit early. Um, and then we either have our own, um, package together. Submitting that to HCD, uh, having it a thirty day review for the public, yeah, allowing time for the ten day comment period and revisions. And submitting that HCD, um, for their ninety day review, uh, so that we can get any revisions back. Um, um, complete that for middle by late log approval basis under each one three. Let's type in. Luckily we've got some which are. Okay. And who?
Okay, thank you Denise. Um, I guess I first have a question. So I know that what we're trying to verify is Site One and One A. But I just want to confirm that we have eliminated all the other sites that we previously talked about.
Yes, that's correct, uh, we did that, um, in March, one and eight two, um, March period. And, um, followed up with that, um, with the only sites are in there now of the bar, I've been victorious, six one and one A. Um, there's some of this that went through the lot before, it proves that the byline, um, but I think we, HCD letter had that, I mean, if I go site one and, and we probably.
Okay, and I, I was looking through my notes from last time you've updated and I think the council at that point. Had decided to rezone both one and one A. I don't know if at that point it was just the recommendation or do you remember if in fact it, it was decided by the council at that point?
There was, as I read the, and relooked at the video, uh, there was pretty much across the board. Uh, approval by each council. So I didn't, um, I didn't consider that to be, you know, uh, formal, but that's how, that's the direction that we started.
Okay, that's, and, and that's how I remember it as well. And then, uh, the other question I had was regarding Site One A. If we're looking to rezone residential, is that for the entire site or just portions of it realizing that? You know, there have been portions of it that's been sliced away as conservation easement and then there were three other, uh, portions of it. So how would that relate then to the overall site as it applies to those little individual parcels that it was separated in?
Okay, so, um, so right now we have that one. So, uh, some goes through. Uh, my suggestion for the reselling approach could be a zoning overlay. Zone, which is a zoning ordinance amendment basically that identifies drafted one. That, that next week, um, that, um, basically identifies. Here's the area that you're, will be, um, rezoning to allow for residential uses. So in this area, you keep your underlying zone there and instead of zoning overlay. Um, much like any other zoning overlay zone, if you've heard of those before, which is applied for the site. And then you identify your location and then you identify your standards that are allowed under your CD requirements or, uh, formal housing. And then you also identify the, the amount of housing or the area of, uh, of residential. Specifically for the affordable arena, meaning for. It's not for a developer to come in and you won't be great housing. Um, and at this time, so it, it provides, and then there's also, you know, we'll come back to the. Different approaches for the overlay zone, but, um, under state law, you can do certain standards, you can do it by a permit, but it's by right housing. That means that you don't have to get a use permission, uh, you can go through and you can, um, go through if you, you didn't do subdivision, you don't have to do that. But you wouldn't necessarily have to go through with a typical developer to, that's not, that doesn't have a buy right ability. Which is, um. So I don't have the definition of analysis, essentially you don't have the perfect requirements. You don't have the same analysis and application, et cetera. But you do have certain standards that you can put on, like the line of standards, line of duty standards for them. Um, and you can also identify that if it's going to be a developer, you can require a development agreement. I understand that, so, um, you know, in the future, developer, someone who wants to do quite one or one A. They have an overlay zone that's, that's here, but even though it says there's no residential under the zoning or code and the zoning designation. Your overlay, uh, overlay zone is applied to this to allow arena, uh, for the housing unit. Residential use on this only list existing commercial.
Okay, would that overlay?
To the existing zoning commercial.
Now, will that overlay also allow accommodation of residential and commercial?
It does, yeah.
Okay.
And maybe if you haven't identified it, it's maybe because, yeah, because essentially you have your underlying zone, which is commercial and with their circle. Um, in office professional, so what you have is overlaying is the one that not places used. Overlay allows residential, which is a, that's what HCD wants, they want the ability to provide residential housing that they want.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, the way I'd like to proceed is, because this is a workshop, if you do have a question, just raise your hand and Denise, you can call on anyone. So. So we identify, uh, anyone as, or wanting as, uh, we're in development. Is there a formula that say requires for us to have, I don't know how the formula works for parks of recreation?
If you go through a subdivision, you still have the subdivision act requirements under state law. But if there's no subdivision requirement, I do not know that there is a requirement for recreation unless you put it in the, uh, the development standards. So I have to check.
There, there is, okay. I can pay him how we go about it. There is somewhere a guideline?
There, for, does the state, I think I understand your question to say, under the zoning overlay, um, that we're going to be approaching HCD with. Is there a requirement or can you put in this part of for recreation?
Well, is there, is there a minimum, in other words?
I don't know that there's a minimum requirement, I'm going to have to check.
Okay.
I think you can get in the standard.
Good. Thank you.
I know that we're at the point where we're talking Site One and Site One A. Have we or will we in the future consider, uh, part of the, uh, light industrial area? I today went online and found that about half of that area is not in the runway protection zone of the airport. So feasibly, uh, housing could go in there. And I, um, so for our fifth cycle, we're focusing on just like one, one, one and one A. But we had a previous, uh, policy that was, uh, the history of what's happened and council put out any policy related to rebuilding. There was a policy, um, that was in the twenty, uh, earlier version of the twenty nineteen plan that identified using mixed use. Um, the residential and others on, so we can certainly, that is definitely something to, um, think about. Thank you.
So just, uh, just a tip, Mr. Donaldson. The overlay would only allow building of extremely low to low income, it wouldn't allow market rate, is that what you had?
No, it would, um, it would only allow at this point the number of arena. Um, and that's how it's, um. That's how it's proposed to keep the limit of the. Um. Of the environmental analysis to the large. However, I think that, um, if a developer were to come in and have a development that has a mixed use. As we discussed before, more, one would want to mix both affordable and market rate. And now they have to come in and an application not at by right. Um, so you have a certain percentage of. And it's affordable unit, low, very low, and long, uh, that, that, that doesn't really.
Okay. Yeah, okay, just make sure I'm, I'm tracking with, so the, the fifth and the sixth are waiting to get done December. This, next, the fifth is late and be on time with the sixth, all, both of them in December.
Well, not in December, the, um, the sixth would be.
Sorry.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. The sixth. We're in the, without contract for what we've been working on, so we're going to start that in March and complete that by the statutory deadline, October twenty twenty.
Is that, is this looking to be done or are we?
No, I think the schedule talks about that. That, um, you know, that is also the deadline on there, so we have until that. I don't know, but that's going to happen.
Right, and you were kind of talking to, a little bit here, so initially the overlay would have the, the arena. Uh, if you wanted to mix use. We could, we, otherwise it's like, you know, low housing, affordable housing here and market rate somewhere else or?
I think it's the fix of what the overlay zone would be, and I think the simple way to look at this now is to move forward with the fifth by law counting element. For no force that we will rezone to common, this number of units for residential use. Currently there's no allow residential use on those sites and that's what needed in order to make the house element compliant. Done the, was the shelter ordinance, we'll leave it down and this is a veteran, I don't know.
So I guess my question is sort of, are we locked into this, like, we, we do this minimal thing, we got the arena covered, the overlay. And then we come back later and go, okay, yeah, we don't want to segregate housing, we want mixed use or whatever. It, so I mean, we're not locking ourselves in this.
I don't think so. So, um, it accommodates the arena.
Mm-hmm.
But you, you know, the developer, I said, the developer could come in and request, I want to do mixed use, I want to include the horrible housing so that. The city can show that it is providing for the underable.
Correct.
And the developer or, um, come in and say, well, I would like to do this and all of these.
Yeah, kind of decision would, they would try to segregate the apartment. Sometimes not.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, and I would not want to have that, um, being present.
Yeah, okay, but, but right now we're just trying to protect the block, the minimum requirement that we can do forward.
Right, we want to make sure we use the language that he provided in the site that they.
It is, it's, uh, it's, we did have that discussion, I remember before about that. With the commercial, and it seemed to be pretty popular, because, you know, lots of people are doing it, so, you know, we, we did do that before and it was pretty well perceived, the idea that. We got, you know, we have building down and that you did, you know, not necessarily in the bottom, but put them above it, right? There's a lot of potential there, it's just.
There is potential.
Yeah, you know.
I'll, I'll go from the previous one, but I think can, I'll just add it, um, there's interest in that next year.
I don't want to keep her about airplane, it's the place to live right now, so. Okay, a couple of questions, kind of working off what Gary is asking. Uh, One A, I don't remember the dimensions, but how large is One A? There is that, or one is. That's, not, not to lock ourselves into something, not to lock ourselves into what I'm going to say. But to satisfy right now, we could designate One A for low income as just to satisfy. All of this and leave, and leave ourselves, that way we don't. Leave ourselves open for doing something that. We don't want to go basically, I mean, I don't say we would want to just put One A as low income versus mixed, but that would satisfy for the time. What we, what we need to accomplish.
Right, you can identify site.
And then we can.
Low and very low.
We can change that later as long as we comply with the.
Yes.
This is the fifth, right?
That's the fifth, I mean, when you say change that later, in other words, if you want to put.
If you want, if you want to decide to spread out and have mixed. In other words, have low income mixing with, with other income, uh, housing. Um, we can change that, as long as, as the time being, we satisfy the hundred, uh, I'm sorry, the, the.
Somebody from coming in and putting in a, uh, makes you mix affordability project in either of the sites.
Okay.
And I want to make that really clear, yeah, it's just, um, that if somebody wants to come in and do a hundred percent affordability. By right approach.
The by right approach means that we really have no savings.
Oh, yeah, you have some development standards that, that, actually, like that design standards, I'd say the things, um, you will go to the design permit. Uh, the design review process, it's currently in dictum, um, you have many hundred bit law. But you do have the requirement of the, the two segments, uh, to get them right now, which, um, you know, you have to be in compliance with, um. Those house elements, those state law sections, and one of them, the, the minimum density is, uh, twenty units per acre, which is, you already have that within your. By the way, um, and that, um, it could be smaller, there are these two requirements, you know, you, you can't have a smaller site, it's just the site, uh, two acres, the two acres. And, um, you should, and then the, the larger and one, and then ten acres. Um, and so you have the flexibility, if you choose to look at the eighteen acre, someone would come in and that's approach. The eighteen acre Site One A, um, because there is, you know, a lot of constraints even on that side with the. Um, as great, as we've identified before, the site inventory analysis. The whole point is to try and make, have like, uh, ability to, you know, have. Facilitate this infrastructure provided through it and, uh, water compensation within the government. When we talk about six cycle, we have a longer time for six cycle, we're actually, it's actually in the regional housing need, which is, uh, twenty thirty-one. So we can be looking at other water options, um, that the water availability. Um, within that time frame, we've also talked during our last house element about that. Water availability and true water on ready expansion, which is hopefully coming online. So there's, that's really our conversation for the big cycle, um, but it's also the environmental analysis that I'm going to make a declaration, you already read. Sure you read, and, um, and the environmental document.
Okay.
Longer answer. So Denise, so we'll have two EIRs that we do, so one for the cycle, one for the sixth. I'm doing an EIR that has the fifth cycle plus cumulative scenario. So you will have two environmental, T book, the, um, documents. Don't know whether it's going to be an addendum or for the sixth cycle or whether it's already be covered. Uh, we're, uh, trying to cover as much as we can, um, because, you know, we kind of need to understand what the policies are for them to. And also, um, we don't know if there should be a reason we require for the, the cycle law, not coming up with. I'm assuming there would be the.
Yeah, because right now we're just resuming for the eighth sixth, and then we have to rezone without your aid.
Right.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
Do we get a map to show exactly where those acres are going to be?
Um, there. So the overlay zone would identify the city owned property north of South Bounder Road and that's Site One and. Thousand site, um, South Side, um, Site One A. And it will have a designated map on the overlay zone, as I said, on the chart of that ordinance that provided. Um, and sure, we could write a map, we, we haven't yet. Um, and sure, we could write a map, we, we haven't yet defined the location of where the housing will be. The benefit of the housing, of the overlay zone and the flexibility of where the housing is occurred. Um, and that allows for some future determine and say, well, I want my mixed use here and like a portable housing here. That also allows us to make sure that, um, we value the net for, you know, have that ATSC issues. And so, um, environmental resources are, we're not on a place for, or just purely to get the following here.
How many units per acre then are we unit friendly?
Well, the maximum is the eighty six.
For the per acre, oh, so we could. So how many units per acre are we going to?
You have to have a density that is twenty units per acre.
Could we go more than that?
Yeah, minimum density of twenty minutes per acre, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, and then in terms of one A, if we do prezone that for, let's say, the fifth cycle. And let's say, um, someone comes in and says, hey, I'd like to purchase eighteen acres. Um, but they're not going to build houses, let's say, they're going to give it this open space. To eat, are they then rezone another place on one, on one site one to, you know, for that like. In other words. Do we still have flexibility to do something else with one A if we, if we resign it now? Um, or does that block us into having housing there at some point?
Question, so you, the arena, um, and the residential overlay zone, doesn't, you can provide housing there, doesn't mean you have to provide that. So if you somehow, um. In the process, we, you know, during the big cycle, someone comes in and wants to develop something different than you, but a loss of, of, um, of a suitable site. They have an element and you can think, and you think that's some format, I can't remember the, the. State law or department, but what can move forward, because you have to have, you can't be losing site. Doesn't mean that you can't do it, but you're going to have some priority that you will have.
Can you use your, identify another site?
Right, you could, which that was just by one.
Right, okay. One, one, you can get out the same numbers.
Right, and I think that's a good decision because there's not very many cities that are very good, have this amount of land available for placement. Be able to satisfy every that we have. Um, like we saw the numbers, you know, that were horrendous, you know, in terms of the amount of. The obligation for, for, to meet arenas. We've got that, we have the land.
You have to make all these decisions essentially quite soon, right? Well, you need to. Decision for, for, um, the rezoning, like where it's going to be, or is it just, I mean, I know we're going to start looking at programs or policies.
But I would suggest that we would not try to determine location of where the sixth cycle is going to be. Six cycle site inventory analysis, which is after you done for the sixth cycle. So, yeah, we'll still have Site One and Site One A available land that, um, will have eighty use of opportunity. Um, and other other sites that would could have water in the future with potential water projects. So there could be an upselling or a change in selling or a mixed use. Um, typically HCD wants to see that if you, if you're going to show a mixed use project that you've had the history. It's a justice over that has had history, it's definitely implementing one in the past and it's affordable housing. So, and that works as another unique position in the sense that we haven't had any development. And, you know, of any residential given, uh, very decades. So, um, we don't have the ability to show HCD, oh, yeah, we can do a mixed use project in a. Disney commercial and provide a portable housing because we've done it in these three projects as others. So, um, but I think your key question is, what do we have to do to get to HCD like, like my strong. Uh, recommendation is, we want to get a document HCD as soon as possible for that ninety day review. Um, whether we have everything we want in it as, as we want in it, we back into five programs. Um, we'll, we'll see, we'll do the best that we can, but I feel like we're actually in depth intensive session on it. Um, and I don't know, we've been at that very timeframe.
So this, I know you said you have got two nearly.
I was suggesting, um, we just need to have outreach, we have to have outreach and since we. We are now essentially having an outreach meeting, right, six cycle, this is a lot of questions on six cycle. Um, but we also want to be able to outreach to, um, yeah, a, another meaning to ensure that we. And that's what HCD.
Is there, sorry, excuse me. So the only overlays that we're talking about that part of the fifth cycle or the sixth?
So my, my suggestion is for this fifth cycle, we have an event. To the program that then we will need rezoning the park. The method, how rezoning, what the zone related is, you don't have to decide that today. We need to put the amended program in to HCD and get their, um, blessing on that. Um, and, um. For six cycle, we can discuss if it should be an overlay zone or if there's an area where we think in Site One or One A or another location. For our city that, um, would have the requirements for a site inventory. And six cycle has changed a little bit in terms of requirements for site inventory, it's not a whole script. Yeah, you have certain. You, you, you need to be able to tell that you have the, you know, the building structure. Um, you do, you see that.
They can be underwater, what, so we're trying to do. Oh, you say, oh, yeah. They've gotten, they weren't counting land under the house, but it's. It's further. You tested all questions, there's, I'm sure, I, we're sure, are the, just some of the sequel stuff and the YR and all that. I know there's a big movement right now, um, that, you know, as officials are working in the, um. To, uh, make the sequel easier for housing development, is that going to impact what we're doing here? I mean, maybe not, like, not good, like, later this year, is that going to make that?
Possible, and I think that that would be good for, in one of the category limits, and then a, a hundred to thousand. That jurisdictions are paying for not just having on days to six cycle, but in the market.
Right, that's the thing I, okay, so I might, we might stand to, you were looking at whole ones, it's not on that, okay, yes.
Well, yeah, the, the approach that we're taking is to try and address, you know, from a cumulative standpoint, because this is. We have this time span of the fifth cycle and or maybe point at six cycle. So it makes sense to look at the totality of the number of units.
Right, right. But they, they change a lot on the, like, later this year, I know, I know, we are already introducing. Actually, they're making it easier, if that comes through, this might be easier. Okay, okay.
Um, but unfortunately for our fifth cycle, we have the control, well, the challenge, which was, um. Although, um, you know, if anyone confirmed they don't want to do that. So again, NGO, that only do that again, then, um, to be cautious, we are preparing, you know. Actually.
This is okay, uh, thank you, um, stopping for answering my questions tonight, uh. I guess I'm the newest, uh, member here and I'm still really like catching up with all of the presentation and of course, uh. Your presentation with Felix, like you, so, uh. My first question, uh, would be, uh, uh, how many pieces are moving? Uh, let's hope we're, uh, we're told that we're down, we're hopes for the six cycle, we have, we have a number, we have a hundred eighty four units. And, um, um, can you give me a picture of how many is needed, especially for, there was no, very low income. Like housing.
There's some real, are eighty units could be a generating, you know. You know, you want that. They, but, and, you know, there's also, and, and homes, that's it, um, on Jersey, we started. Uh, that's a, that's a program or priority, so, um, I don't know. See, how would that, you know.
Yeah, because I'm just like thinking like, uh, for low, very low, uh, income families. I think you're going, you're going to be building like smaller homes for a unit or a, or you can probably exclude the open unit. So, uh, I think that that can't really like be possible for low, low income piece that we live in. And, and that's just like my, I'm not concerned, uh. Another question existed to comment on that and you have, there's a program in the house and that your city desires to have a mixed of public type. To call it all citizens, all income groups, families to, in addition to having that, the number of families and. The income qualification and the money from, and we're simple mothers that are in this area. And so we're really trying to, uh, very important to identifying, uh. Housing needs and the housing needs are something that we look at from the standpoint of. Who are your constituents, who are your residents and what are the, so not just the seniors, which are having aging population. Like there's also, you know, how do you need, yeah, well, we need to spread. But channels as well.
One thing we don't have is a lot of new, was formerly for housing.
What was that?
Formerly for housing.
Yeah, another question, um, because, um, you mentioned that our, uh, city and areas is really in a unique position. Because we have still land, uh, that we can put our, uh, where the vehicles will be. And, uh, however, I'm also like in, in long term, uh, because at right now we're not beginning with the, we're still even dealing with the fifth cycle. And then there's going to be the six right now and of course, in the future, there's going to be seven, eight and nine, you know. So, uh, how can we ensure that in the long run or in the future for our future generation? That they won't have a really like, uh, problems putting affordable housing. You know, in our city, but, uh, uh, they really like need to validate, uh, for future cycles.
Um, I think that's what the arena process is really about, but I think what you're asking is, I'm, is. Doing, they plan the available for future allocation, so fifth cycle, sixth cycle goes to twenty thirty one. There, you're right, they're already sending that survey to about seven cycle. Um, and we've been, it's, it's, the increase is starting to be large as well. Now that's a quality decision, quality increase. Oh, my, correct, Sam, on.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I just wanted to comment, I'm, I'm with Ambig and I believe. We clearly have one of them, uh, it's the Ambig. Numbers and, and analysis and, and those numbers actually go out to twenty forty four. They go out over, um, twenty five years. So what they're saying is we have to build in by twenty thirty one covers their estimated housing needs. Uh, that long in the future. So it's, it's not, you need these houses for the people today, these numbers are for the next. Ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty five years.
Thank you.
Okay, it would be great, if you could provide a timeline that, that shows both fifth and sixth cycle combined, if you could.
And you can ask.
Yes, I, because I, I love, I think my syllabus is complete when I start my class, like, I like the picture overview, so if. Like, I want to know what we're doing every month, every, every month.
I, I would also like to be able to put out meetings, everyone.
Yes.
And we had agreement on those for that, we have a, really, I appreciate that, if you have, and I, that one, I, I buy that. And also with the meetings asking, assuming, you know, uh, to commit to the meetings.
Because I, I mean, I'd like to engage the public and thank you for those who are, who are here, but, I mean, it'd be great to get people aware that this process is going on in our state. So I think, you know, the more that we can announce that are.
And I think you'll notice when you go into the jurisdictions, um, that one yet has completed their, uh, certified all the.
No, they're talking about.
And they're, they're, they're doing their, they're talking about it, they grab their consultant or they're. They're working their way through and, um, you know, we have a small community, but we still want to outreach. To others outside our community in terms of providers, offers, uh, you know. Service providers, our list is, is really expanded when we send out our mailers, um, in churches, schools. Housing authorities, mid ten housing, you know, on the grant and on the, you know, all those, all those really important people that we do want in.
I mean, I knew you were dealing with power outages and flooding and all that, and so, um, but for our future meetings. Like, if you could provide more information than presentations, you know, your revised policies and, like, all of that, so we can read it at that time, I'd be really.
Right, I would like to have done that. Um, yeah, I.
Because a lot's taken.
Power outages, this is way jumping ahead, but are we able to say that we want utilities underground?
I think that's a general plan policy.
These are, uh, excellent.
Um, may I?
Yeah, I just want to know if there were any other questions or questions from the public as well.
I don't have a question, I have a comment, so I can wait until we.
Okay.
Depending on when you want to hear.
No, not at all. I can do it now.
Yeah, I'll write it.
Okay. I hope I don't see my forty minutes, but I think this is very important. Um, we are in a, across the line here, trying, and we're, we're making noises that we want to have. Uh, non discriminatory practices, that we want people to integrate and not segregate. And I'm a little concerned at what I'm hearing, that we might end up creating a project. Where affordable housing is going to be a segregated spot. And when those children go to school, no matter what color, no matter what their ethnic background is, no matter where they came from. They're going to get teased because they're from this particular low income area. One of my sons lives in Texas in affordable housing. What they did there is they have huge condominium housing projects. And the affordable housing is within all of those, so you don't know who's in affordable housing and who is not. And it works out very well, there, nobody knows unless you walk inside because the interior finishes were a little different. But the importance is not to, not to create a situation where you're going to be encouraging. Unconscious discrimination among people, we need to be working in the opposite direction and integrating people into the community with everybody. So that all people, all people are free. Secondly, on reality of affordable housing or any, any kind of housing or similar that, or this stuff. You're in like a multi-starred apartment building or something. The noise that you get in living in one of those apartments, it can be horrendous and it can actually impede you to sleep, to work. At home, to do things that you need to do. Um, and the project that my son is in, they're really skinny food story things, but each person has their own unit and they all have a little patio. So that they have a space that's their own, that they can put their personality into, which I think is also important. Not telling someone that they can't plan a tomato bush or something like that because it's not allowed in this particular housing community. Let's say though, that they, we should be aware, since we have this wonderful opportunity to create something really special. That can be a template and example for other communities, see what we really can do, if you really want to do it. And I really think that the search. Integrating people is extremely important, a really good opportunity for us to do something that might change. That's it.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments from either the planning commission, council, public? Okay, seeing none, so Denise, I guess what we need. We have seen none. So Denise, I guess what we need from us today is the approval. To be moving both site one and site one A as residential, to keep you on track and keep this moving forward.
Yes, I I think that was, that's what I'm hearing um from the majority of the. And planning commission, and that's, but I heard that. That, that's um, that's fine, and I don't wanna be commenting on the comment, um we wanna make sure that the. That the opposite of, you know, you don't do anything that would in any way, um try and isolate a few. And as you described, so we definitely think about how we do that in terms of the overlays on and putting it in language. And how it integrated and all that, and I think that's what we're gonna tell you about. Appreciate the comment.
Okay, and I think I'm hearing that as well from, from the council and planning commission about resuming those properties. We're all in agreement there. Okay, um so I think you have what you need and um. You know, I look forward to the next update, next meeting, and I know you can be in contact with the city manager to work in more detail about.
Right, so our next step for the fifth cycle update is the next, the fifth cycle update to the manager. Next week, so then that, that allow them to review it and then it can be posted on the website. Doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to go to the planning commission or the council, uh it'll show the check, track changes that have been made since the adopted. Nineteen twenty nineteen version and um. Since it's already been um provided as a tracked change version previously, we do that in ten days. You know, any comments that can submit it, CD. That's still allowed us to comment during the period of the nineteen sixty days, H D is reviewing it and. We're, we're talking about, you know, increasing our website appearance, um so that all the documents will be available and transparent on the website for the fifth cycle when we start. Um also, uh we have workshops from previous. Uh, we have now the workshops that will be needed in the world as well. That's available.
So just process wise, just to clarify, uh this is the workshop and so this is just the discussion that we're having. And the first time on the, how the agenda at this point, to be honest, direction. Um Denise, thank you once again, and thank you to the planning commissioners for being here. What I would like to do now is call for a ten minute recess. Um so that we can reconfigure the room and then we'll re-ensure for the special meeting, so we are here. City council, roll call please.
Council member Uli. Your council member Alec.
Here.
It's number Rex Stokronen.
Here.
It's number Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Donalds.
Here. Next is public comment, anyone wishing to address the city council on that or not appearing on the agenda may do so now. Yeah, time limit, no more than three minutes for each speaker, no action will be taken on that product. And all comments will be reversed to ten. Seeing no public comment. Next is old business, uh the housing element fifth cycle update in direction by council. And consideration of the revision of programs fifth cycle housing element in direction to staff. So Denise.
Yeah.
Okay. The board is yours.
And thank you Denise, that big planning consultant. I believe that direction that we were looking for, as you said during our public workshop. And um.
Yes, but I just wanna clarify, the direction from the council was to include article one, article one A and uh rebound overlay.
Yes, thank you.
Did you need clarification of the one on language for the quality? The quality language.
The policy language that we before you, um that's what we're proposing to use for that draft housing element, that we. Public and change to that. That can be made now or if you. Public review area. Comments, fine, if there's any suggestions or any changes, you'd rather know. And and you're not voting on the language per se, you're not voting on that language, I won't be able to actually adopt the housing element. So I think the rest is like, it's CD to look at it. And provide their input because they would like the revisions, they do every time we bring them something, um and then they'll have a benefit from the. Or recommendations. Consistent with that.
Okay, so questions, comments from the uh the council, I'll start at the end, council member Uli.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh Ms. Duffy, I did have a question, like, are there any financial impacts? Uh with this, uh you know, Rihanna update or the things we're gonna be doing in the future, especially for our, for our city budget.
I think that's the question that's meant for my.
Yeah, so the addition of that will be very important to. Tonight, I have to work on and get a contract, because we still need to contract the release of incentives for their work on the sixth cycle. And given all of that, so far the fifth cycle work and funded the grant funds, and that was approved two years ago and.
May I add to the benefit if we're able to get like compliant housing element, especially two point out, so our grant funds for publicity, each on. And that's my specific acronym, um so that was um the building cost for fifth cycle. Uh the cycle three two point out, have I think a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar non competitive grant. That can be used for preventing, um and I think it may be hopefully able to be used for. But it's not the, um, and the links to Ambig is. Not yet, maybe the grant applications can be available um summertime, but you actually won't be able. It's received a grant until beginning of twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Okay. Council member Al.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson, uh. All of my questions have been answered by way of your very thorough presentation, as per usual, thank you, and by ask of you by uh public. And uh fellow council members. Um, any and all have been answered relative to our actions tonight, the rest um. Will be future cast by way of. Development agreements and exactly how we decide to paint the landscape of. Of our land inventory, of our public, um, public inputs as well. Uh so far as tonight, we are, we are generally dealing uh for this first draft, the language in this revised program A one that you presented us with, right?
That's correct.
Right, and that will come back to us, be finalized after review by the city manager. However, you had mentioned uh only site one was uh was outlined in uh this revised program. If you want it to be included uh in the draft presented to the city.
Yes, that will be the change.
Should that be the direction?
Then, yes, I received that direction and um. Think that um we can just make that change now for only sites one.
Thank you. I'll see for sure.
Um, I don't have anything, I just, um in regards to the REIT grant from when I was at Ambig last year, it seems like this new sort of two point O funding is really more for. Uh implementation and not so much for planning, so I don't know how much it'll pay for this cycle planning.
So they, um, right, I think that there, there's two, there's competitive grant and there's a two point O, that's the, you know, so. I think we will definitely need to look into that, that there is some ability to have something provided for implementation of. Something that actually provides housing.
Okay, council member Bill, I think you got your open questions and looking forward to seeing the draft. Thank you. So wasn't there a, also a LEAP grant too, in the very beginning?
Yes, actually, we have a combination of LEAP and REAP.
Yeah.
And the LEAP and and REAP go to the total of the amount that's, um, we have that. Sixty five thousand dollar LEAP and sixty five thousand dollar REAP. Last two years ago.
Okay, um I'll take it out to the public, any questions, comments from the public? If seen none, bring it back to the council, I think the direction has been given, so I think we're good with this item. I'll move on to item number four, which is new business, uh introduction and first reading of ordinance number three twelve, amending portion with title seventeen of the Delaware Yolke Municipal Code. Regarding the definition of family, as well as establishing an emergency self shelter overlay. To allow emergency shelters by right in accordance with state housing laws. With that, I'll also turn it over to Denise Dougan.
Thank you. Uh that's noted in your staff report, the planning commission recommended uh manually approval of the ordinance that was drafted um. With input by the city of planning, uh as noted in a previous presentation in the board talk, it's one of the two items that required by H D for compliance of an element. Uh we. Have a staff report that identified the background as to what nerves, how, how things are and when to stop first. And we also made sure to include the revision to the definition of family, which has been something that must have programmed in the twenty nineteen. That will look into our first reading tonight, um to allow the second reading of more strongly.
All right, thank you, um questions and comments from the council, council member Uli?
Um, thank you, Ms. Duffy, for uh uh introduction and uh. Uh when I was reading the definition of family, uh that was really like proposed uh by the, also approved by the planning commission, uh. Uh I set some, some road break in my mind, like uh whether uh if the definition of um family. That we had uh would align uh with our street values, uh especially for promoting inclusivity and uh diversity and empathy. Uh whether if the revised definition of family uh provide uh greater flexibility for households uh with non traditional arrangements. Uh such as cohabiting couples, uh single parents or individuals with disabilities. Uh or whether the revised definition of family uh help address house affordability and accessibility issues by allowing more people to live together. Uh in a single dwelling uh unit and, and I can see that those are really like uh incorporated in the uh simple definition of, of our, of family. Uh, uh and but there is only like a, a question uh in my mind, if there are any potential negative impacts. Uh of the revised definitions such as uh increase, um, uh of course, density or, or noise that we need to address.
Yeah.
Okay, um. The new definition of family is one that the city attorney um identified as being consistent with state law. Our old definition of family was not. Um, the definition, people can live together whether they are defined as family or not now, and with this definition, it's really a cleanup and. Something to acknowledge that families don't. Out there, no one will want shape, et cetera, inside of, um, in terms of impact, it's not something that, I think. It's um some secret bad part. There's, there's no impact associated with it. It sounds, um, I would think that this is similar to what people are doing on. Just for the whole correct definition, I think this is. Habitat.
Yes, I, I agree, I agree, I love the definition that we have right now, uh it's just like I'm thinking like there are any potential negative. And uh, and, and how we can even uh. Monitor, evaluate even the uh effectiveness of our definition of family throughout the course of time. Uh especially uh uh like before when we had our previous definition, we like updated, that's why we are. Reusing that, revising now and uh we're gonna be uh monitoring mechanism in the future uh when it comes to this. I'm just wondering.
Not sure, I heard a question in there, but I'm to address.
Uh, I'm just like wondering uh if there are any monitoring. Uh measures that we can do.
Oh, we're gonna train this. Excuse me, um, we don't plan on monitoring the definition of family as a planning consultant. Um, I don't know if there's any other monitoring actions that we needed. It, you know, through a city attorney or to imagine.
Yeah, the city attorney, if there's any comment or whatever.
No harm really other than it's the, the, the entry to state law, as part of monitoring concern, I don't know that there's any uh. Program that, that monitors that, uh that, or specifically a, a, I mean, it will be. This definition will inform all permits and permiting to happen in one quarter of the year, and so I guess, um one quarter will be all.
Yeah, so, so it was, I'm just like wondering, I know uh uh right now the, the state uh definition of our family is already like sufficient, uh. However, maybe in the future, uh like for example, what about our pets, you know, so people would consider their pets and their family members. You know, so not, not something that they own, so uh I don't know, if in the future that will be incorporated in the definition of family. So, uh but I'm okay with the definition right now, thank you guys, thank you. That's all, thank you.
Okay, council member Al.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Um. First of all, I love that you want to include your pets, um and not just because they're beloved members of our family, but so we all can use as a therapy. And uh, a one zone on the house. Um, if I can speak to, maybe add a little something to and correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney or city manager, um. You know, maximizing or exceeding occupancy in one dwelling as a mayor may not be defined as a family. Uh will probably be uh more complaint generated in the community, and if so, then it'll probably be investigated as a health standard issue, which I think is already within our ordinances. As far as um occupancy and uh exercise, don't as well. Um, are, are we discussing both of the. The new definition of family and the emergency shelters in tandem, can I, can I direct any and all questions to Denise Duffy at this time?
A- absolutely.
Okay, none so far as uh redefining in the term family. Uh it's great that we are evolving from the traditional, uh long-winded. Version to a very concise and inclusive, so justifying with the uh, with the new de- definition of our family. Uh, I am curious as to how we arrive, how is this metric determined? Uh number four in section seventeen, if you understanders. How do we determine the maximum number of beds for a shelter of being sixteen? Is it based on, on. Land area, moving and state standard, uh.
It's not a facility or. It's not a state standard, we, there's maybe fifty, fifty one to increase that number um in other jurisdictions. I basically look at it in a sense of locations and available area that you have. Um, it would be amended if somebody wanted to. Look at more, um, I. Kind of discussed it very briefly, let me be manager and.
So thi- this was a general number of a lot of workshops with the planning commission, they, they reviewed uh this and um. It's just that, well, of course, we allow for more of any one facility, it's complied since two can't be within three hundred feet of a hundred, but uh. It's a very pressing issue, not speaking too lengthy to it, but uh there are over twenty five hundred. But there are over twenty five hundred that are countable individuals that are, you know, homeless population within the county. And sixteen is something, but I'd love to see Delaware, you know, offer as much service to the unserved as we can. So, but I'm not suggesting any amendments to it at this time. Now, are we only discussing the amendment or any of the other? Um, particularly the permitted principal uses. Are we too many? Believe those? Can those be amended some over time? I see some that personally and maybe others would see as undesirable cigar tobacco stores. Society is kind of spreading from that in a healthier direction. I couldn't agree more. There are a lot of cities that don't even allow smoking on their streets or film within, you know, or anyone saw the youth of today. I don't see some included. I mean, this could go on and on. Art galleries, would they fall under one of these categories? Or would they be considered at a time of application for whatever business model as a conditional or discretionary use permit, I suppose. So we're pretty much covered there. Don't need to exclude any. And to that point, are there any prohibited within the city? Um, you know, consider a, well, for the longest time didn't have bars. I don't think. Maybe the only one that I don't think Delaware needs a nightclub. Something along the same. If more or a bar specifically, I know we have a bar at Chubbies, so it's primarily eating. Are there any prohibited businesses that can or should be included? And is this, you know, we're in terms of use law.
And, and my assumption is it's tied to the general plan in terms of what's filed in, in those particular zone districts. This is a C one area that we're talking about, but I'll defer to the city attorney.
True. Thank you, Mayor. So what's before you is, is the emergency shelters. But to your point with respect to the other, there's many municipal codes are outdated. There are those panerings now, things like that. And these are principally permitted. Then you would also refer to the code for usage that were left or permission to use permit or conditions. Um, more broadly though, but the action tonight would expect.
Yeah, thank you. You're good.
That's all. Thanks for bringing me in.
Okay.
Yeah, I have to do that. These are principal permitted uses for the rented shelter at that bed, other beds. So someone come in, you can increase the number from, you know, tonight. Or some recommend go through a process for high ground.
You ran away. What are available resources are here and how much property we have. And where we can spend our place in emergency shelters in areas that are uh, co-located with resources for folks who would be in a shelter. And, you know, some other cities have better options than we do. Uh, instead of we build out there and we have services down there where we have availability. But so we're trying to weigh a number that match for what, what's reasonable for our community to provide. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, for those that may not know, we've heard some terms principally permitted or used by right. And that just simply means something that's allowed, you know, you go meet your building permit and then you have different levels. Um, uh, use that may require a youth permit or traditional youth permit gives the city flexibility to add more requirements to that. Just like a principally permitted use and used by right are the same thing. And it just basically, it's something that's allowed without more from the city.
Okay, councilmember Scher.
Um, I initially didn't have any questions, but the whole discussion about pets actually got me thinking. Um, is there any? Would it be possible to put on here that we would want an emergency shelter that allows pets? I mean, I know under fifteen, the management plan, they have to submit a pet policy. Can we just say we want only shelters that also include pets?
I'll defer to this.
I just have to worry a lot, but it's like.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose, I don't really have it off the top of my head, but if that was the letter of the council, it could be uh, part of the motion. If it wasn't due, we wouldn't do it, but we could report back.
That was all I have.
Yeah, I got a, in section seventeen dot eighty dot zero three zero, you're going down. It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and then there's a two floating out there in midair. Jumps to a minimum of ten square feet, and then we jump to item twelve, but it happened to nine and ten. And. And that's a resolution that needs to be completed. At least on the one I've got on it.
Are you on page?
Page nine and ten.
Oh, page nine and ten.
So the other page nine is with a client waiting and take care of each other, revise blah, blah, blah. And there's a two just floating and minimum ten square feet per bed at the facility. And minimum size of hundred square feet for air. And then it jumps to nine.
We can start that. They have to do that down before the second reading.
Maybe direction now, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's okay to do that now. We'll note that for the record and then you can do that. I believe that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do that, then I'll walk to the public. Me, public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and we'll entertain a motion regarding ordinance number three twelve. Including a potential amendment regarding pets. Very valid point. And, you know, in a lot of ways, you know, folks that would need those facilities, a lot of times their pets are going to be with them. So with that in mind, yes, councilmember.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not making a motion yet. Uh, this just came to my mind because back in the country where I grew up, I've seen these movie like, uh, in some, uh, situation there that happened. How can we really like ensure that emergency shelters are safe and sanitary? Uh, I know that in the, in the, we have a management plan in here that lists that just during the staff training. And, uh, but I don't see the sanitation part. I don't know if, if the sanitation would be included on the management plan.
City attorney, I'm going to answer the question. However, anything that's built has to comply with the health and safety code. Building permit requirements and things like that.
Right, so generally the government, the city, I thought they would be expected.
But, yeah, not that city.
So how about, we're non compliance. So if ever the provider of the emergency, emergency shelter, uh, one complying with their plan. Uh, are there some penalties for not complying?
And that's why I guess that's all that's covered by the.
That probably all kinds of. Okay. And we don't have to include it in the, in the subdivision of that. Thank you. And we can make a.
So is there a motion? I'll make a motion. It'll be a dot ordinance, which you control, I think. Um, with the comments noted, the missing provision and the, and laws. Okay, perfect. Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, move on to item number five, which is our next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, March twenty eighth uh, at six P M. And we are here.